Well, it was five o'clock somewhere in the world a few minutes ago. At this time, I will call a work session Monday, July seventeen, two thousand and seventeen. City period or please, we have four. Item three, writing for review and discussion item three A is the police department. Three A one is to review a permit process for Georgia law solicitors. Chief Lamb.
Yes, sir. We were just asked to brief y'all on what the current process is. And we've got a work back memo that Major Phelps did that outlines it. It starts over here with tax and license when they get up an application which is filled out and then they're directed to go to the sheriff's department for fingerprinting. That's the change we made internal to the police department because if we run them over to the police department, all it gets is Georgia only through the Georgia private information center. If they run the present sheriff's department, then they get nationwide. So we thought that was better, you know, for protection of those citizens, just to know what they might have done in a single other state. And it comes back to tax and license and it comes to need to review the criminal histories and your approval, disapproval. Once they pay the permit fee over here, however many people are getting actual photo IDs, come to Captain Buck and does that process. And then the permit's good for ninety days and they can go out on any day but Sundays and holidays and as long as it's between nine a.m. and six p.m., they can solicit door to door after six p.m. until nine o'clock next morning. And that's it, you know, and that's the gist of it. There are some exceptions outlined as well, but you know, somebody's going to somebody's home for a private meeting or public officials, I guess campaigning, newspaper deliveries, food deliveries, religious charitable and political organizations, those are exempt from the orders. And there's an additional page that shows how many we've had in the last, in FY sixteen, we got a total of three applications, one of them had eleven people on the application. And then so far, instead of the new one, to, yeah, be happy to answer any questions about the process or any other thing that y'all may want to know about.
Chief, I don't have a problem with the process. The only comment I would have is under the exempt persons, we got elected public officials and candidates for public office.
This is just taken from cities on the council.
Yeah, I want to make sure that if you're not elected, you won't be, if you still qualify to be in public.
We'll certainly check. We'll see what's in line.
One question I got, either the community gonna know, I know when people solicit, I know, you know, we're trying to sell something, you know what I mean? So, so how the community gonna know that you get?
They have their issue, they're not prepared with their photo on it, it has the expiration date and the fact that they are also, you know, authorized.
It's a city ID.
It's a city.
We do that application. It shows that it's a city appearing ID with our C O R.
But I just want to make sure we know, let people notify that. They gotta, they gotta be, they gotta be, so you can see it, you know, you gotta wear it up.
Just to wear it. And that's why they're instructed when they see issue too.
All right. Now, on that, the city takes no position about what they're soliciting for.
Well, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that when they, when they knock on the door and come up to the door, you gotta be able to show his badge that people can, you know, think, you know, think of what they want.
And the reason we made that change about the finger parenthesis, I was reviewing one of these a couple of years ago, after the alarm system came up, everybody was from somewhere besides Georgia, you know, that none of them lived in Georgia except for the head guy. And so if we ran into Georgia, we don't get anything. When we ran them, we got stuff that, you know, that I disallowed to them at the cost of welcoming out back to the sheriff's office. So we just thought that was better for protecting the citizens and kind of give us a better idea of who's out there.
You have comments, counsel?
Thank you, sir.
Item three B is the Department of Community Development. Three B one is a discussion of food truck regulations. That's Wood.
Yes, sir. Mayor and counsel, we were asked to provide, to do some research into how other communities regulate food trucks and pull some information to discuss with you and I think ultimately see whether counsel has need, things we need to move forward with here in Perry. But what I did, ended up looking at regulations from Athens, Clark County, Alpharetta, Marietta, and Roswell, Georgia. When I googled food truck regulations, Raleigh, North Carolina popped up and for some reason I happened to pull some information from that. So those are the areas that happened. And what I found is that the Georgia Department of Health has some overall regulations for food trucks, regulating the food service, including food vendors. For the most part, they've got to provide certain sanitary facilities for their employees and they've got to have a base of operation where the commissary or where they prepare their food. And that's primarily it, they kind of leave this permit that they get from the Department of Health. And looking at how the different communities regulate food trucks, it kind of falls into two categories. Some communities that I found appears only regulate food trucks on public property, it's primarily in streets, and then there are others that regulate them also on private property. So then looking at the communities that regulate public property, most of them require a permit from, from that community. They designate certain streets on which the trucks can park and van. Regulations further define the manner in which the truck is parked and displayed and making sure that there's adequate space on the public sidewalks for people to move around and for visibility intersections. They typically require the food truck vendor to carry liability insurance and to identify the city. They look at limits on days of week in or hours of operation. They have to provide waste containers and they typically put a limit on use of sound devices and they also, most of them prohibit alcohol sales. And in most of these places, it seemed like they already had areas of their community where there was already activity occurring, working nights, maybe at a park or maybe it was something, some activity center in town and they would establish a street adjacent to those areas where food truck, food vendors could come in. Others that may have been trying to create activity, drive out food trucks to come in. Raleigh, North Carolina, their regulations dealt with public property and private property and didn't private property in a moment. Also with Greenville, they did not allow food trucks on public property except as part of they permitted special event or when they contracted with Parks and Recreation Department or if they were parked within a designated food truck parking space within the assigned dates and times, and I'm not sure they ever established this. On private property, and so that's what I found on how communities regulated public property. On private property, food trucks, and really it was just Greenville and Raleigh where I found private property regulations, food trucks maybe allow private property with the owner's permission. Sites must be developed and have adequate parking. Designing district must allow for eating establishments. Food trucks must be separated from brick and mortar restaurants or have that restaurant owner's permission to be closer, whatever that set limit was. They have to be properly separated from residential uses, sidewalks, fire hydrants and other food vendors, and they also regulated hours of operation and use of sound devices. So that was kind of a quick overview of, of some of the regulations and I think the interest is whether or not counsel thinks we should consider some here and if so, if you'd like to move forward and do more detail to this, what, what they would consider.
Do we have a request?
Not to my knowledge. Well, I think the requests are coming. I think that's gonna happen. I mean, I look at all the surrounding cities, you know, and they're, they're promoting that, but it's only the last time, so I would like to be ahead of the curve and know what we would like and would not like and offer that service.
Yeah, and I think I enjoyed it. I was the one in Sunday, we had, just to see how it was raining, but we have a, I think when they do food trucks, what I would like was, like mine, I like for us.
Museum, maybe you can best verify. And so I know you guys have gone out and looked at that, so, you know, Warren Robbins, I guess, does an application, but it's not as publicized as Senator was doing since.
The patient, they do the food truck, they put bricks there morning by eight o'clock, they run it all over the bay.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir. I think based on your discussion, we will prepare a suggested recommended ordinance for you to take a look at in state. I would suggest at least this time, well, let me ask you, do you want us to prepare something that shows public and private or just?
I think we have a cover vote.
Yeah, we're gonna have a cover vote as far as food.
I guarantee if we only do one, we're gonna get a request for you.
One of the main things I think, but normally I'd say when the private sector just doesn't have your property yard is okay. But you know, it's the point they had about sound and also the closeness to an existing restaurant. If that's an area, I can see where existing businesses will come back and give you all a hard time potentially, you know, on this stuff.
Well, I'd even say if the violation of our sign ordinance is gonna be rampant. What do you want to address that I at least look at? Anything, brother?
No, I just, you know, I, I think that we are willing to face the issue and I'd rather have ourselves prepared for that and know, rather than somebody coming and saying, I'd like to do it in front of your conference.
We don't want to. Or, or it comes up, you get complaints and there's anything you can do.
Yes.
If you know. Did you have something, Mr. Johnson, you need to cut off? Yeah, okay. Anything, brother? Thank you. Item three C is the Department of Community Development. Three C one is hotel incentive policy, Mr. Smith. Mr. Mayor? Mayor, counsel? I have for your review and consideration this evening, a general hotel incentive policy outline. You know, this is following on the completion of our hotel feasibility study this past March and working towards attracting additional quality hotel rooms here to the city. It is up long been thought, but also recommended in the hotel feasibility study, the city needed to do a little something in regards to incentivizing development or redevelopment of hotel properties here in the city. So what, again, what you have for you, there's a, a general incentive policy that is modeled after the recommendations associated with the hotel feasibility study. You can see that staff, we explored a lot of different types of incentives, some not so legal, I was something mad to Eagle, some of that stuff, but you know, basically what we had come to you with is a recommendation in regards to the types of things a city could do and mostly minor things the city could do to help make a hotel development project here in the city more peaceful. You'll see that the base criteria, again, follows on the hotel feasibility study. We'd be looking for at least a seventy room property, mid-scale property, limited service, you don't have to have a restaurant or bar or any of that type of stuff, but you do need to have certain amenities, like an exercise room, a little business center, you know, and preferably we'd like to see some media room, that type of thing. But just, you know, what we consider a nice hotel property, something to add, something to the community. You will see that we have left it relatively open in regards to what we can improve the staff level, but also what we bring to y'all on a case by case basis. Generally, what I'm looking for is something when I'm talking with a hotel developer, I can say, well, yes, the city can offer you this, this, and this, but before, you know, it's done, it's a done deal, we'd come back to you for final consideration in, in every case. You know, we want to make sure that we ultimately have the authority to say yes or no to any project that comes to the city. Products be based, we'll be judged on minimum investment, you can see the minimum investment. In regards to new hotel project, we're looking at about sixty-five thousand dollars per key, four million, five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the total project cost. For redevelopment, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. My thought there is we would like to see the redevelopment of existing properties, perhaps before we solve the development of new properties on greenfields and that type of thing. You will recall, we have a little bit of above sixty percent economy hotel rooms. If we can do anything to transition those properties to, to more mid-scale property, you know, I think it would be so. Job creation, most hotels create twelve to eighteen jobs. We'd be looking for something on our eight full-time, full-time equivalent employees. Again, the minimum quality standards and I guess getting into kind of the meat of the matter, permit fee waivers, expedited review, utility connection fee waivers, perhaps negotiate utility rates if they're, you know, significant gas user, and then public infrastructure improvements, maybe a sewer line, water line, that type of thing extended to their property line, you know, something I think the city should certainly consider. Now, if they're gonna build some, you know, something way away from where we have existing water, sewer and stuff, you know, obviously it wouldn't be feasible or equitable for the city to do something, but you know, it's, it's within reason. It was reasonable to incentivize the development. I think we should consider all kind of the options that are available to us. So that's generally what I have. What I'd like from y'all tonight, just general feedback in regards to, you know, what do y'all want to see, you know, in hotel incentive policy? What type of property do you want to see here in the city of Perry? Would you prefer the redevelopment of existing hotel properties, something to kind of swing the incentive package towards that? You want to see new hotel properties? What are you absolutely not willing to do? What do you definitely want to do? All this type of stuff, you know, I'd really like to, to have your feedback and put together kind of a final recommendation to bring to you at a later date. Unless this is great, that's great too. We can also just move forward with these sizes, but you know, any questions, any sort of, sir? Yes, sir.
One I can confirm with, with the motel that we do have, the city look, curate and dilapidate, I didn't know if we wanted to get into that or not, but that was something that we wanted to improve on, you know, and that was a help that he kind of like thought about it, you know what I mean? I think, or there were, go, we'd like to see that there are some that need some help, you know what I mean? And I didn't know what we could get into that or not. We don't want to go that way a lot, but you know, Old and Chad Island, they're new on the spot, or require new property to, you know, to get some, of the great motel that time in the city, mobility, you know what I mean? If we can do that, like you said, that incentive that we can offer come to come in and build a motel that we sold it out, and I think that'll be a big thing, you know what I mean? I'd like to get some good information, but if something we just have a computer and do the way we want to go with.
Yes, sir. I mean, I think the ultimate goal here is to add additional quality hotel rooms to the community. Be advised, the redevelopment existing properties, the development of new property, it's just a matter of what y'all wanted to see, you know, I think from staff perspective, we would like to see the redevelopment of existing properties, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a planning background, that type of thing, you want to strengthen the core, you know, lessen the type, sprawl type of development. But again, we just, we need additional quality hotels here in the community.
My little feeling, you do that, you and existing, if I could be done, you just couldn't pull this out of the equation.
But we could also do targeted, you know, geographic areas in the community. Are there certain areas that you want to see a property go? You can kind of look at it that way as well. This is really whatever y'all want to see out of it.
I know one to the four, you know, that, there's even a, that egg based down there, they seem to be filling up down there now. I don't know, you know, that, that's a market, you know, right there, you know what I mean? So we got one down there, but you know, there's another, might be an issue for somebody to put another down there, you know?
I think it would be beneficial for us to leave it relatively open, you know, to vote. So when it does, when a project does come to the city, again, it will be considered on a case by case basis and based on the parameters associated with the individual project, you can say yes or no to certain things and that type of thing. You're not really pinning yourself in, if you will, in regards to type of property you can incentivize or not.
I think it's important that we have incentive for both, that we can redevelopment and new properties. As far as targeting certain areas of town, I think that would be more of a job for the planning and zoning. We currently have zoning laws that are in place and the ordinance is, and if a hotel motel will already fill on a piece of property, whether there's one there or not, that, that will be the determining factor. I would hate to target a section of town and somebody shows up and go, I'd rather have it over here. If that becomes an issue, it's something we can look at, but, but I think moving forward, you're giving incentives for both the redevelopment and new, it would be, of course, a vacuum of strength to support. And, and that will also put pressure on the existing motels to, they've, they've got to reach, reach a certain threshold anyway, and if they're not willing to do that, then I think we're wasting our time. Hard expression, they're putting a lipstick on a pig, it's still gonna make it a pig. From that's been important.
True.
So what we want here is the whole house.
Where's the funding in the company?
In regards to each of the individual type of incentives to be offered.
Where are you gonna pay for the incentives? I mean, you never can give it away, anything we, we either take it out of hotel, hotel tax to cover it and some curiosus to where we're gonna fund it out of, number one. Number two, if I have a restaurant sitting next to a motel and I want to redo that restaurant, how can you choose to do it for the motel and not for me?
The city has the authority to target incentives towards specific types of development. In regards to the funding, you know, it's, for the fees and that type of thing, I guess it's just kind of lost income and then.
Well, we don't do that, the funding comes from.
The primary, the primary source would be from a hotel, all to the facts. But it would also go back and depend on what it is you're talking about doing. Okay, for example, if you were agreeable to extend water and sewer line, maybe not very far, but you know, certain.
No, we don't know.
And that would be paid for by water and sewer fund, you know, supply. See, it, it, it depend on what is, or the fee waivers in all likelihood, that would come from the hotel, motel, general portion or the purity from development.
Because we, we make a policy that we, we don't give anything away that's paid for from some font.
Yeah, shift it around.
Even fees that we waive or pay for.
Correct, that's right.
So I mean, I, but I, I do have concerns about how you differentiate one segment of the public domain or private domain, if you will, and any other person that operates within that private domain that want access to funds to help improve their business. So I, I'm, I just, I have a concern about, can we really do that? I can understand if you bring in industry in, that you're incentive here, you're doing an incentive on that, but we don't pass an incentive that I know of to, for expansion of current businesses that we have in the past that I've known of.
Do we, do we have something, please, down under voting to help business, improve their business?
Yeah, it's a side one, that type of thing, something like that.
Josh, you also have the industrial building authority and that can be used for existing sites as well as the new. The, the, the general premise, going back to Mr. Walker's point about legality, follows along like what you do with the development authority. You just determine what type of industry, what type of employment generator are you interested in getting into community? And which, which one of these do you think would be the most beneficial for your community? So for example, we may not want to have a refinery come to Perry. See what I mean, on the industrial side? We just don't feel that that's, that's competitive, okay? This originally came out about the issue that we have on our declining, or potentially declining, people staying in and around Perry because of the competition from Warren Robbins with the new hotels and motels. And that a number of our facilities in Perry, for all practical purposes, are antiquated. There's some other issues to unlock, most of it is that they're antiquated. So the, the quick policy question would be, do we just want to let that segment of employers that we have in Perry just go through the natural process, economic process, which potentially could be drastically closing down, you're not having very many? Or do we want to provide some type of support? And that's what the hotel feasibility study came back and said, that what you need, if you're gonna be competitive for, and this is one of the big issues with playgrounds, is if you're gonna be competitive for the playgrounds, you have to get this certain level hotel. Everybody remember that in the study? Okay, so the question's going to be, how would we get there? So one position you all can take is, well, eventually they're gonna come or something's gonna come because, Holiday Express, it was one that came in, that came here, there weren't any incentives for any of that. See what I mean? To just kind of leave it like that, okay? Or do you think we should do something to kind of encourage, because so far, there has not been much of a drive, you know, from the profit sector to either upgrade, you know, the existing motel or to construct new motel sector, this criteria. So it's kind of like a, a jump start. Now, going back to your point, if I was a business person, I think with a restaurant, if I could say, yes, that's true. In our particular case though, we have not noticed any decline or loss relative to the restaurants. You know, for example, there's Firehouse Subs, you know, they submitted plans, they're coming and star, you see what I mean? So that's, that's a segment you can say, well, it seems to be doing okay economically and it's not hurting us. Whereas the motel issue.
And also in reality, the more viable hotel rooms you have, in, in the side effect, it's more people to eat in restaurants.
Now, I can understand that, but I'm not sure it's our role to get into the private segment because if we had a demand here, our study says we have demand for maybe one hotel. Is this kind of incentive, which as small as it's gonna be, going to incent somebody to go and spend two or three million dollars to upgrade a hotel that's, that has passed its prime? I mean, I don't know, I'm not gonna name any motel, but I'm not sure they would be economically feasible to go in and reconstruct a number of these, so. I don't, I don't know that you can do that. And I don't know if it's our role to put some type of incentive back. I mean, it's gonna take a lot of money on their part, on the private sector to do this.
Sure.
I, I, I just, there's a reason they're not here. It's not because we're not offering incentive.
I think it shows a general level of support and. And, you know, there's just not much municipality can do, you know, the continous clause, all that type of stuff. We can only do so much, and this is kind of the scope of this, we can offer. And it's not much, you know, it really doesn't amount to much.
That's what I'm saying.
But, you know, it, it, there's a general perception that maybe, you know, this is the community we're welcome in, you know, this, you know, the city really wants us here, that type of stuff. Will it make a difference in the end? Maybe.
But we're already expressing that every way we know possible. And the reason they're going to Warner Robins is because there are market over there. Warner Robins is not giving any time, as far as I know, as far as incentives. It's built solely upon, or is there a demand in that market for people to go invest their money? That's, I, maybe I just have a difficult time using tax money regardless of public funds from wherever they come from to incentivize building something that there's no demand for, that I, that I can tell. I mean, I think that a hotel will come.
There is demand, it's just not here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But, but we have a product that is not capturing that demand. And I think this is an attempt to at least scratch the surface, for lack of a better term, of helping people target that particular issue. You're right, significantly more money on the private end in order to accomplish any one of these things, but we're still focusing the spotlight on what we know is a problem in our community as it is. Unless you want the natural selection, which people, one of us will live long enough to see.
That's true, many months.
So.
And you're.
But you see what I'm saying? It's, it's one more effort when we already know we have a product that is not meeting demand. It's more psych, it could be more psychological than financial.
Well, it's definitely that.
Than anything else, and I, I think it's a tool, more than anything else than. But I don't necessarily disagree with you. If we were to decide, this council would decide that our next push, depending what we do with this, is restaurants. Then we can develop something along the lines, but it's still gonna be mixed fuel compared to the speaking versus the investment that anybody's gonna come, either to retrofit what's already here or build new. And that's just the nature of that beast. But I, I look at this as more of a, an honorable tool than I do a significant financial impact.
And is that, is that fair? It is, and nearly every discussion that I have with a hotel developer, which I've spoken with many since we have our feasibility study completed, you know, they all ask, what incentive is gonna give me? You know, what, what can the city do for me? And at least I can say, we can do this stuff, as opposed to saying like, nothing, we're not gonna do anything.
In reality, too, as little as this will cost in the stupid things, you'll probably make up that much. Hotel motel tax, the property tax.
I can run a report, you know, I think I saw a report that I put out in regards to a prospect showing, you know, the additional property tax revenues and estimated hotel motel tax revenues, all that type of stuff. So, yeah, I mean, we can try and give you as much information as possible when you're making a decision whether to incentivize a project or not.
Mr. Smith, what's your request tonight? Is this worth consideration?
Consideration, yes, sir.
Counsel, is there any further information that you would like to ponder? At this point? Do you think we're right?
Yes, sir.
You think that? Just one thing, based on discussion here, I think my interpretation of manager is this whole thing is sitting on hold until we decide, until you decide if and you want to proceed. I mean, and that, it's your mic, it's not whether the size or the type of the incentives. Everybody with me? The question is whether this council feels that this would be an appropriate area to provide some type of incentive to make your offer, or not.
Fair enough.
I agree with you, I think you said, I bet you probably say, I can tell people out there who want to, and the first thing they're gonna ask is, is there any incentive? You know, I think we should help, I mean, it's something that we can't do much, but that might get them hoping to come and put a motion in. I'm all for it, you know, I have no problem with us, like you said, having a pilot put it in place, just in case. I think we can, when we cross that bridge, I think we can make a decision how much incentive we're gonna give a person. Rather than go and negotiate with the person, we're gonna only do this amount, and that's that, you know what I'm saying? Then he gonna decide whether he gonna come or not.
Mayor, I could appreciate that, Mr. King, but we do have two council members not here. So I would suggest we just wait until maybe your first meeting in August, first work session in August. Everybody can think about that and then decide what you want to proceed. Let's, I'm pretty ready to go right now, like Mr. King was saying.
I'm impressed.
I don't have a problem with that. I would like to see some kind of small incentive. I know this is not offering a lot, and I understand everything that, that you ever said. But when you talk to people, that's the first thing they ask, to have some kind of incentive. And it's not a lot that they ask for most of the time. And, you know, we know how far we're gonna go, and we're not, know we're not gonna go very deep into giving big incentives, we don't have, it's not our place, it's not our place. But I think, I think, looking at the, the ones that you had down there, I think those will go back.
How, how will it process, I'm confused, I guess, I got, I'm running slow, I haven't had enough time, I guess. But, but Reverend King's talking about you having the ability to go negotiate with people, but you really don't know what you can negotiate with until you come into it approved by a council. Is that the way it's gonna work?
It'll ultimately be approved by mayor and council, yes, sir.
So you really don't have.
It, it allows me to discuss their options with them. You know, I'm not asking for authority to go out and get city resources or anything like that. Yeah, no, it wouldn't be like that. It'd basically be providing me a framework within, I can operate in regards to discussions with these developers and things. And then based on, you know, the level of investment, the job creation, all this type of stuff associated with the project, I'll provide you with that information and provide you with what staff recommends in regards to providing incentives. So, and I mean, I would always be upfront with these sort of prospects, that the mayor council, mayor council ultimately have a decision and the authority to, you know, provide incentives or not, so this is what we generally can do.
Can you do that today, though, and that's exactly what we've done on a recent retail project?
Yes, but this, this provides a bit more structure for me. You know, that was more of a request directly from the, the company. So, you know, nothing's perfect. So, you know, this basically allows a bit of incentive, but yes, we have these incentives. We're, you know, trying to recruit hotels here in the community. Mayor Council is open and say, generally, we can do this type of thing for you. And then, of course, based on the information, you know, probably coming in a little bit more.
I think this gets back more to the psychological, we're making a public statement that, yes, we will be glad to consider some incentives on a case by case basis. And this is what we have discussed, but it's not necessarily in writing in stone. And that gives him his ability to say, yes, our council is willing to entertain something. If we do nothing, then the only thing he can say is, well, this is what it is.
What it is.
Yeah, so, so it, but again, to me, it's back to that psychological advantage, if you will, on that standpoint.
You know, I'm gonna build a business, I'm gonna bring a motel, that's the first thing I wanna know, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him incentive. So if Robert is talking to me, he said, well, we can do something, then once I ask what I can get, you'll bring it back to a mayor council, and then they'll tell you what you can bring back to me. You know, I mean, I think that would be more feasible in that we, if I'm building, I can deal with that. Then, but I know if I can, we don't plan that, you know, that's how I look at it. I'm being a risk area, and I sold it, that was another situation. So I like what y'all offered to me, alright, I'm coming to build my motel.
I would recommend the old, the office meeting with Riley and Robert.
Robert, look at it.
I think it's an important decision we're making, and I think, you know, I think I'd like to have their input if they have any, if they don't, that's fine too.
I got a little bit of that.
Yeah. We put this on the next work session agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I'm three C two, is the Perry housing team update, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mayor Council. The Perry housing team has had a busy spring, and I just wanted to bring you up to speed on some of the stuff that we're working on. Shit over here. Just give you a brief update on what the housing team's working on. We had another neighborhood cleanup, this is our seventh neighborhood cleanup. I think I provided some information already on this cleanup, y'all know what it's a, this is my photos up there. We were in Aqua Hatchie this time, we had a very good turnout. Again, Houston County happened to have humanity, was very good to us. They bought a lot of volunteers that day, and we actually met a lot of the residents, talked with them about what we're working on. They seemed pretty excited about it, so it was, it was a good day. And of course, we finished up with some extra barbecue. Brian was there. His basket is glory. The Perry Housing Fair, this was an excellent event we actually had last week, or two weeks ago now, on twenty ninth of June, it was the first ever housing fair we've had in the city. It was well attended, we had good exhibitors, kind of a broad range of exhibitors, from state, federal resources to local resources, local banks, that type of thing. You know, it was a faith Bible fellowship church, thank you Reverend King for allowing us to use your church. It was a wonderful place for, you will recall, we had this scheduled to be in the Creekwood Park Pavilion. It rained, so this time we wanted to kind of patrol for weather as much as possible. You know, it really stormed that day, currents have been against, I'm glad we had, actually had an indoor facility this time. You see some of the, you know, folks, some of the residents in the community to get some assistance. Brian was there. But most of the vendors, most of the exhibitors that were there walked away with some referrals, with some possible clients, particularly Georgia Legal Services, who had a booth that was set up, they walked away with about five possible clients in regards to assisting folks with wills, assisting folks with clearing the title of the property, that type of thing. I know USDA, who has some very favorable entry level financing packages for first time home buyers, you know, rural home buyers, that type of thing, they walked away with some collateral patients, some are bank, you know. It was the people that were in attendance got something out of it, and the vendors that were there got something out of it. So I think that was a success, and we'll look on building on that success next year. We have our second Perry Housing Fair. I want to thank everyone on a public forum who participated, who, who were there, who exhibited on behalf of their, their organization. You can see, again, we had a broad range of resources that were on hand to provide information, to educate citizens about what is available to them in regards to purchasing a home, improving a home, you know, the legal work, financing, all sorts of stuff, it just feels really great. An update on the grants, this is something I did frequent calls about, I wanted to bring up, to speed on kind of where we are with these. The CGDG grant, this is again, the five hundred thousand dollars to fund the eight rehabilitations and two reconstructions on a lane street. The fourth rehabilitation is underway, and the two houses or residential structures that are to be reconstructed have undergone asbestos testing, and the results should be in soon, hoping those are favorable, but they're old properties, you never know. And we are working to have all two properties completed by the end of calendar year 2017. It's an ambitious goal, but it's something that we want to do, and we want to have that money extended so we can go for other grants. And then the chip grant, these are the rehabs, I was moving a little bit slower. Going back to the housing fair, one of the reasons I thought it was important to have Georgia Legal Services there, and I was hoping to have an offshoot of Georgia Legal Services, the Georgia Airs Property Law Center to be there, is because we're running into a lot of problems associated with not having clean titles to properties. And also properties in regards to having leans on their properties and that type of thing. You know, you can't have any of that, you're spending federal money on a rehab project. So if we can get these people legal assistance, you know, hopefully they'll be eligible for the grants. So we're going through that, we had a list of about thirty five homeowners that wanted assistance to the chip program, and we're working away to do that, trying to determine if they're eligible or not, and if we can, help them to become eligible. So you see one's been completed and two more are underway. In regards to the, the funding at this point in time, you see the CDVG, we spent about fifty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, little under fifty thousand dollars per home. And then the chip grant, we spent fifty four thousand dollars, and the two that are underway, there's ninety thousand dollars obligated for those. So it's kind of a general overview where we are with the grants. Any questions on the grants? They're rocking and rolling, they're, they're coming along, they're a lot of fun. I wanted to show you some before and after pictures that hopefully will, you know, help hit home the importance of these grant programs. Some of these houses, we put together the application for funding, you know, I was amazed at some of the houses these conditions were in. And to be able to go in there and even for the rehabs, basically rebuild them a new home, has really been a blessing to those families that are living in those homes. You can see here, you know, they didn't have central heating, so they're, you know, heating their house with their coil and their oven. Here's bad plumbing, all sorts of issues there with the outside of the homes. And then coming in, you know, you see it basically looks like a new home, new roof, new siding, again, that bathroom that you saw completely reconstructed. There were actually some holes and stuff in the floor here, that's been redone with some nice flooring, you know, improvements to ceiling, almost all the houses had leaky roofs, leaky ceilings, that type of stuff. We've been able to remediate those, come in there with central heating and air systems, you know, basically all new appliances, all sorts of stuff, it's been pretty excellent. And then this one actually received a, a D accessible grant as well, so that's positive. Set of continually, some of the same general issues, you've got the leaky roof and ceiling and, you know, actually some areas where the house is settling and that type of thing, and just substandard plumbing. Coming back in there, you can see, you know, basically a new bathroom, the nice tile and all that, brand new roof, trying to fix where it's settling right there on that one side, new ceilings, and then, again, a picture of the new, the big shower. And I wanted to show you what we're kind of looking to do in regards to the reconstructions that we're gonna be working on. You see that the general outline of the houses to be built, two bed, one bath, you know, it's basically you're taking down one home and replacing with another similar floor plan. But, you know, very nice brick and, you know, siding, and, you know, it's very nice. The homeowners, property owners, very excited about what they're gonna be getting out of this, so just an excellent project. Really add something to the neighborhood. Does anyone have any questions about some of the stuff we're working on? I know it's kind of a quick overview, kind of down and dirty, but I want to let you know the Perry housing team is busy. We have a lot of other stuff going on too, but these are kind of the more visual things that I'm looking at, so. I'm sure to keep you posted as these progress.
Questions, counsel?
I get asked all the time, why Sand Hill, and I, I gave them the answer that I would give a point at, but when, when Sand Hill's area is completely, we have everything that's, when will we be going to another area in town? And is there any way that somebody else can get something while you're doing Sand Hill?
Yes, sir, I get, I get that question a lot, too. Basically, the Perry housing team has a long-term vision for the neighborhoods in Perry, specifically the target neighborhoods. The Perry housing team has five target neighborhoods, Sand Hill is of course one of those. When we're looking to do these grant projects, we looked at every community, or every neighborhood, trying to determine which one would be the best fit right off the bat for CDVG projects. For CGDG projects, chip, chip project, that type of thing. And Sand Hill, um, you know, being a large neighborhood with a, a number of houses that had a lot of issues, um, based on our housing assessment and that type of thing. We thought that'd be a good fit to start. Uh, and what we did was we created a revitalization area strategy, um, for that neighborhood. And it's a three-year program administered through the state, through the Department of Community Affairs. Where you work and focus resources in that neighborhood for a period of three years through these grants, through that, you know, other resources, that type of thing. Uh, then hopefully after three years, that neighborhood, and, and we're looking, with all the grant projects and stuff, we're going to be trying to do in that neighborhood. Though nothing is, is certain because we're all competitive, we're looking at doing sixty or seventy homes when everything is said and done after the three years. So after the three years, then we can transition and do a revitalization area strategy in another target neighborhood. Um, you know, whichever one seems to demonstrate the most need. Uh, because, you know, that's, that's a big thing in, in getting a lot of these state federal resources, you have to demonstrate that need. Uh, and a lot of, you know, a lot of it's data-driven, but a lot of it's just, they'll come down and drive with the neighborhoods and that type of stuff, so. Uh, it's, it's a long-term vision. So if we were to hit all five target neighborhoods, it'll take approximately fifteen years. Uh, so again, it is long-term, uh, but there is, there's a plan in place, there's a vision in place. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Item three C three, the city facility wayfinding signage, Mr. Smith.
Mayor Council? Uh, following up on our last work session, um, when I presented to you some, um, general preliminary designs, wayfinding signs for city facilities, uh, you had before you a memo from me. Um, and then some construction documents. Uh, based on the initial design for city facility wayfinding signage. And your comments when I presented those to you, um, our team at KMA has put together these construction documents. And it was city sad to let go ahead and move forward with constructing a sign for city facilities because there is a need. And what we're asking for is, um, basically permission to move forward with putting together RFP for doing so. And also putting together a plan for the city facilities in regards to signage. Uh, we want to go ahead and start on this. Our facilities need to be signed. This would be kind of like the phase one. Um, and, you know, build the brand, do the wayfinding, that type of thing. Uh, and then once the entire package from KMA is completed, what's been done will be just inserted in that, into the plan. Um, so basically, I don't want to wait until the whole plan to be completed. Uh, we want to go ahead and start with now. Uh, and once you have it for you, um, it's just the, the general signage package, you want to come back. At the next work session preferably, um, with that draft RFP for your review. And also the different city facilities and the type of sign for each of those facilities.
Council? Their consensus to move forward on those guidelines? Bottom part?
Yes.
Go full.
Did you all take a look at the documents? Okay. You say move ahead forward. Okay, let me ask you something. I could ignore the fact that it's the Board of Education. Okay, this is what I'm interested in. Which way do you want to have the signs, for example, for City Hall? See what I mean? On the right. Okay. That's what we're, that's what we're talking about doing for tonight. Okay? That's our understanding, but we wanted to make sure that you all had a chance to see one of the other variations. So at least my understanding is, after that, you all put me in my correct spot. Is that the kind of brick type of deal with that layout and the logo sign, that's going to be one that we use probably for our major structures. Correct? Right, art center, city hall. Excellent, thank you. Now, if you go and take a look at the next group, although they're actually probably pretty much the same. This is what we're talking about that will be going on some of the parks. Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Okay, so it'll be like the one post, see how you have the sign layout now. On that there, it will have the name of the park. And the municipal address. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Ben, straight me up, thank you. We're all set now.
We all do what we're doing.
I thought that was important stuff right from the beginning.
Well, and, and, and I know Robert's tired of being here about this, but I really think it's important for us to get going and get our stuff out here.
I agree.
You know, and, and so that's, that's the one. The other thing though, what Robert will be coming back with you on though, is there's going to be a priority. List of where we suggest these go, because we do not have enough money to do all these signs at one time.
Yeah.
See what I mean? So that's why it goes back about, you know, example, like the brick layout and everything. Okay, fine. So the first one may be. See what I mean? And then with the deal with the parks and then we'll start moving along on those. Okay?
Anything else?
No, sir.
We did one, yes, and they don't like it.
I'm trying to go over. Yeah, I've seen those guesses going down.
Item three C four, Your City Program update.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Your City Program. Um, we are really excited about this. Uh, our deadline was last week and we were wanting at least, or our limit was twenty participants, and we have twenty as of today. So we have a full class. Um, we have a variety of type of people, which is a great, um, thing. I think it's going to be a dynamic group. We have people from banking, um, real estate. We have a couple of business owners, insurance, and restaurant. Uh, we have some homemakers, we have some retirees, a couple people from the base. I think it's going to be a great group of people. Um, they'll have a lot of input and I think we'll learn a lot about the local government and how to come and act and, um, involve, um, community member. Um, we will kick off in August at, um, with a kickoff event at our Houston Lake Country Club. And I'll be sending you all an invite for that, an invitation, uh, and you can bring guests and I hope you all be there. Um, it'll be a great time to meet the participants and, um, tell them a little bit about yourself and how, um, you all work together and how it works to be part of the council. So, um, if y'all have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. I will probably be in touch with all y'all a little bit before. Um, and I think that's it. But we're excited. I think it's going to be a great thing to do. I hear, I've heard a lot of positive feedback about it. I think, you know, the community is excited to have this kind of program out there and, um, I think it's going to be very beneficial, so.
Any questions from this panel?
Just a comment. I think one of the ventures we don't get is their feedback about our city. Because, I mean, we've looked for that type of mechanism over the last several years of getting that feedback about what we're doing right and what improvements we can make. So I think that's going to be a, a very good forum for us to listen as well.
All right, great. Any others? Looking forward to it. Thank you very much. Item three C five is the downtown outdoor movie night event. Is that good?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk to you tonight about an outdoor movie event that we are hosting in collaboration with the Georgia National Fairgrounds. This, while I regret that due to some scheduling issues and getting the date from the National Barrel Horse Association folks. Uh, we're later in presenting this to you than we would have liked. This is actually a really great opportunity because it is the first and what we hope is a new phase in our collaborative efforts with the fairgrounds. To host events and to cross-promote each other. So that said, our plan is to host a movie on Sunday night on the Courthouse lawn. We have already gotten the county's permission to use that. We will show Fantastic Beasts and Where to Find Them at eight thirty. We have coordinated with Kona Ice to do shade dice, Just Tap to serve beer, and Cox Catering to serve popcorn. All of that would be, uh, individuals purchasing as they do at other events. We will have Taylor Restaurant Solutions providing porta potty on, uh, Ball Street. And we've coordinated with Party Playground out of Macon who've done the movies that the Leisure Services Department has, has shown. Uh, to show the movie for us to bring their big screen and set it up on the courthouse lawn. Again, that will be eight thirty on Sunday. We're asking for your permission to go ahead with this. We have submitted the special event alcohol permit to the police department. And, uh, talked to a couple courts and they would be able to provide trash cans and the assistance we request. So I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Council?
None of the business stuff are. That's why we want to make sure we have porta potties.
Questions, Council? Any issues? Move forward?
Yeah.
Do you want me to put this on the agenda for tomorrow night? Sorry, I'm blocking any scripts?
Yes, that was in the event application.
That's what you'll see. Subject to that, it looks like a setup. Item three C six is a downtown tailgate event. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, uh, in the same vein, um, events downtown. Uh, SAP has been exploring the possibility of having a downtown tailgate event. Uh, for the first Georgia game of the season, uh, which is University of Georgia Bridge's Notre Dame, uh, on September ninth. Uh, having it downtown, uh, setting up the big screen, kind of like Catherine's talking about with the movie night and like it's been done before, um, with the movie silent man. And, um, just allowing people to come, set up their tables, bring their coolers, bring their food, and just tailgate and watch the game. Um, it's a prime time game, uh, seven thirty. Um, should be good weather for it. It's a big game, uh, nationally broadcast. Uh, this is geared towards, uh, providing, you know, something for the citizens to look forward to. Particularly with the city of Perry and our fastest growing demographic being twenty-four to thirty-four year olds. Uh, we get to something that, that they would like, but also something that will appeal universally. Um, you know, Perry's a football town, middle Georgia's, you know, a big football community. Uh, it's something that would bring folks out. Um, and again, give it something to look forward to. Um, it's something to enjoy downtown with the rest of the community. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the general overview of things. Uh, wanted to get y'all's opinion on it. See if this is something you want to go with. Mr. Smith?
I think it's a great idea having the game, the movie downtown, game downtown, but I'm opposed to having a cooler downtown. I think we need to use the same vendors like we used for what Catherine was having for moving that.
I know that feel. When we started having that, you know, musical, you know, nobody could have a cooler. And so we, I think we have to be careful of how we do stuff because, well, you know how people are. I got to tell y'all. They see one thing, they want to first thing, they want to say, how come we can't do it over here? And so I think we always start out, let's make sure we do things so that we can stay above or, you know, don't create a, a problem. So some people can do it and some people can't. And that's the first thing somebody will say. And we don't need all this personal face that. Y'all let some folk do it. How come, how come you can't do it? You know, it's an event, it's not even, uh, so I think we've been going to do it real well. But we've been making sure that we could apply it better by doing the same thing.
Rust is would be open that way, right?
Yes.
Say it, so we can put them in the sale if we brought somebody from, Rust is for somebody else from outside.
Absolutely. We approach all of our downtown businesses first.
Yeah, I share the concern because we as a council have been very adamant that our downtown events will be controlled without glass bottles and those type of things. Because of safety concerns and I, and I think it's a pretty dangerous precedent for us to move off of that for just this one event.
Okay.
That was a great idea.
They, they bring their food and stuff like that.
Okay. I'll take all this on your notice. Can you get that?
Anything else? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item three D is administration, three D one, the use of the armory tank for a local radio club, Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I have my June twenty-seventh memo to you. This is a follow-up on, you may remember the request about reinstating or connecting on the local radio club, use our armory tank. And you had asked for a couple of things. The first one was to check to see what our other local communities do. That was done. The city of Warren Robbins does not allow these type of activities on any of their water tanks. Houston County did not, where they had any, but they did not have any particular policy one way or the other. You may remember that some of the discussion with it is that, uh, particularly from a public safety standpoint, as a backup. If you have tornadoes hurricane, you remember that, some prob, cell phones, radio clubs to do. So along those lines, as you may remember from my memo, administration is recommending to you that we do not allow them to use the armory tank. And refer them to Houston County and see if they can get on one of the towers. Uh, you may remember that Houston County is one of its main towers located here right in Perry, uh, down on Frank Satterfield Road.
Council?
I agree with the recommendation. I need to.
All right. I'm sorry. He said okay. Very good. Is that something you want to vote on, Mr. Gill, or is it consensus?
You know, what I'll do is, is consider that to be a consensus. I'll advise the petitioner. There are, you guess some issues you can come in.
Sounds good. Thank you. Item three D two is the partial development of certain city property, Mr. Gillmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I also provided to you, uh, in board pack, a proposal that we shift some of our operations from the current public works site over to what has historically been used, what they refer to as a spoils disposal site. Which is off of Ball Street, uh, just a little bit down from where our public works facility is. Uh, you all remember some of that property, actually property we had was the old landfill. Remember where the old Perry shooting range was? Okay, well, we're not talking about going out where the landfill was. We're talking about going further over to where Ball Street comes in. But that's all property that we own. And, uh, in essence, uh, adjust that over as a transfer site. Uh, because we have to, uh, as part of, well, a couple of reasons. First one is since we are MS four community. You may remember that from the stormwater, all our debris and everything that's collected, all has to be measured and go out to a landfill. We can't just spoil what's over in the ground. So we got to track that and satisfy EPD. The other thing I think we can do with that is a lot of our sanitation folks right now, when the trucks are full, they go out to the county landfill. Out on two forty-seven, and I think it'd be more effective for us to have our own vehicles coming, drop off at one central spot. And then load up on a bigger truck to take out instead of our smaller ones going in with all the time. And that's also where we can have, uh, uh, roll-on, roll-off containers to load this material. And we can avoid having some of the, uh, construction debris and spoil that you see from Ball Street, you know, our public works facility. And that'll free up a little more room at the current public works facility for some of the street equipment and everything. And also confiscated vehicle, you know, some of those type of things. And the stormwater and the sanitation, the equipment can be stored out there as the, at the, uh, new site can store it out there as the. But they, we don't have to build a new structure, administrative structure because it can still use existing, meeting there. We own that property, you know, so it isn't where we have to do any purchase or any of that type of stuff. I'd just like to recommend it. Get your concurrence to proceed.
Is this property fenced?
No, we will need to come in.
Thank you, Ryan. I think we're going in there as well, so that have access. Can we get all the money in there?
We, we definitely have to do an upgrade with it and at least some gravel and then we'll see based on the going. We want to be kind of careful relative to paving out there because there's going to be a lot of equipment coming in and scooping up, you know, all that type of stuff.
Just thinking about paved access in, into.
Probably, probably so.
Are you, are you looking for access off of Ball Street or more anything for that?
Ball Street.
It's kind of, what is it? It's, uh, it's there now.
Yes.
It's right up here across the bridge and so.
That's right.
Yeah.
Now, we want to, we want to stay away from anything on the Mark Luther King side because one, you got to go through. Now, we want to, we want to stay away from anything on the Mark Luther King side because one, you got to go through a neighborhood to a big, big drive to go back there. Also, when you first go in, that's where you get into a lot of the old landfill spots. So we want to stay off of any of the area that's been used as a landfill.
And just to be clear, this is a transfer site, so it is not, we don't have to have permitted.
Like that, that is not understanding, but we'll make sure we're clear with EPD. If some other bigger issues come up, we'll get back with you.
That makes sense. It seems, it seems like this will be a lot more efficient and eventually save us more money down the road.
Yes. Time wise and wear and tear on the equipment.
Right.
But like I said, one of the major things is how we have to shift on how we dispose of debris collected like with the street sweeper. And, uh, what they clean out of the, um, uh, catch faces and everything. That all has to be monitored and measured and all of that type of stuff, and this will be much more effective.
Counsel. With my first report? Let's go. Item three D. Was there anything else, Mr. Gilmore?
All that. That's it.
Like item three D three is the public head reports on GMA classes. I guess we'll start with you, Mr. Smith.
All right. Well, as always, GMA put on a wonderful event down in Savannah this past June. Uh, I was fortunate enough to participate, uh, in a number of classes while I was down there. Uh, the first one I took was one I'd actually been trying to get into, um, for a number of years now, a class that possibly into, uh, local government debt methods. I'm sure you know most of them are looking at this course as like local government debt methods, that sounds awful, but it's actually pretty good. Uh, you know, it, it looked at essential methods and avenues for municipality to issue a debt in the state of Georgia. Uh, you know, the overview of public financing and operational legal framework associated with general obligation bond, revenue bonds, uh, special district, uh, taxation. Uh, and then anticipation notes for taxes and bonds and that type of stuff. You know, basically the whole framework of financing options that are available to governments, um, and to their partners and things. Uh, it was, it was very good. Um, in particular, one of the guys who led the course, um, he was one of those brawling type of speakers. Uh, so he really made, you know, revenue bond, geo bonds, that type of stuff kind of stick out. So it was a good overview of, you know, an important tool that local governments have to use, especially if they're going to be providing, um, high quality services and amenities to their, their residents. So it was a good course. And I did a full day course, um, economic development. Uh, you know, as, as is with, with a lot of the GMA courses, uh, you know, it's, uh, geared towards alleged officials, particularly new alleged officials. Uh, but it was, you know, it was great to go in there and get kind of a pressure on all these economic development, uh, looking at traditional economic development with business recruitment, retention, um, expansion, that type of thing. But also going into some new kind of more progressive stuff, uh, place making, uh, regionalism, you know, all those types of, uh, things that used to be, you know, five, six years ago, kind of dead ones that are kind of coming together, uh, under the umbrella of economic development. Um, and really in community developments, it's, it's kind of the whole city, you know, it's a whole city type function. Uh, so it was, it was good. Uh, very good courses, uh, and I appreciate, um, y'all's support and opportunity to go down there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Man? Copy off, folks. They got to change it up a little bit. There you go. Mr. Bassett.
So, like Robert said, it was a good conference. I appreciate y'all including the department heads in that. I think it's, uh, worthwhile. Uh, I was able to attend two classes this time. The first one I went to was on economics and education, which looks at the societal cost basically and the impact on city services. Uh, for low graduation rates. Kids not reading at grade level in their early years, you know, which impacts how many prisons we're going to build down the road. Uh, strategies to improve all those. The good news, of course, is Houston County ranks better than a lot of other states. Uh, the graduation rate, two thousand sixteen for the state, seventy-nine percent. Uh, which is, you know, down toward fifty, but we're not toward one as far as it's based around. A lot of challenges to, you know, to come from that. Performance. I also went to a class called Living Beyond Expectations. And don't look everybody to guess what that means, but basically means about the Asian population that's living longer and longer. Uh, and the demands in that place is obviously a challenge, uh, to deal with the growers, growing seed population. We have seen that firsthand here in Perry already. We're, you know, looking for ways that a lot of stuff falls with police law, but it wouldn't necessarily fall, it would fall to families, but families don't live here. So, uh, you know, we have, we have calls for the husband and wife, they're, they're still living in their home, but, you know. She can't see to drive and he's too infirm to drive. So, uh, when they have a medical crisis, we usually get involved, fire departments involved. I know she would contest that. And so, uh, it's a really good class. Uh, talk about transportation issues as a few issues in this demographic, uh, once, you know, if you don't have public transportation. And then you've gotten to where you can't safely drive, how do you get around? And some communities have started from like a one day a week shuttle service, fairly minimal cost. Uh, there have been partnerships with Herbert Hoover and Lyft, uh, with coupons and, and one, uh, up in Cobb County, they even got a partnership with those two services that doesn't require a smartphone. Because if you ever use them, you've got your credit card modem on and requires a smartphone. Uh, they've, uh, gotten around that. Uh, talk about things like cottage courts, whether it be five to nine, uh, housing units around the common area and targeted at senior population. Uh, and then I didn't know about this, but there's age range in the community certification, which parents may pass and it does pass. So I don't, I don't have a clue. I attended the public safety committee, uh, lunch meeting. And, uh, we heard a lot about the local law enforcement compensation committee that's just been formed. Uh, sponsored by a guy named Senator Greg Kirk. Uh, and it's aimed at appropriate compensation for local law enforcement. Kind of springboards off of the, uh, the state, you know, what Governor Deal pushed through, I guess, for the state law enforcement. Uh, and of course, he's stated his issue and probably right, so local compensation is not a state issue. He's taking care of the state, obviously, but it falls to the communities to take care of. So this is a study group, I should add. Mayor, I know you were in this session, so if you, if I'm saying anything wrong about that, correct me on that. Happy to refer to that, but, uh.
Nobody had any sources of revenue recovery.
No, of course not. But that's part of the study as well.
And that's part of the study, that's true.
Um, also looked at the public safety policy platform, which ranges across fifteen areas. Uh, I think this is ongoing, but it's no surprise it's there. Nothing really stands out that I thought was controversial about that. And of course, I went to the vendor area and picked up on a couple of, uh, good things and really tried to purchase for the place. I found a really neat light that is kind of like those little blow up, you know, the guy that does this, what they do. Looks like a lighthouse comes up and it's got a thousand watt light. But itself contain a forty pound unit, as you carry it, and all you need is a one-ten hour light. And so that'd be great for states like Minnesota.
That's it, Mr. Gilmore. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council. Um, I, thanks for letting us come. For me, it's, it's, I think it's a little bit different because I'm not a Georgia native. So getting to meet, um, other councilmen and just folks from other parts of the state. I remember one, there's a lot of little side conversations that are, that are pretty awesome, but, but, you know, it's just kind of, I'm, I'm, everything's so new to me, so I soak it all in. Uh, this conference wasn't any different than last year's, just that I kind of knew where to go. I was, I just spent much time wandering around the conference center because I didn't know where I was supposed to be. Uh, I got a chance to attend four classes and, um, the first one was about bi-friendly communities. Uh, there was some useful information there, that was the first class that I had on Friday. Uh, fortunately, our, our speaker was very knowledgeable, but monotone, so if you've ever had some kind of, you know, classes after the conversation is the same for an hour or so. Yes, you kind of. Do a little bit of this, a little bit of that, anyway. But, uh, the, what I took from that course is there's a lot of things Perry has already done with your Austin transportation plan. And two thousand fourteen, um, strategic management plan that is already utilizing your infrastructure in a way that's very friendly. And it's not quite perfect yet, but knowing, getting familiar with your, your goals and your plans, it will be. It's going to become much more bi-friendly, like some of the more metropolitan areas that have a little bit more money, a little bit more things, they've grown, they're bigger than we are. Um, the next course that I took part in is called Building Strong Communities. And it was, it touched on, uh, some things that Chief Man talked about that really surprised me. This was probably of my four courses most exciting. It, um, they had some ladies from the Georgia Family Connection Partnership that was basically covering, um, the trends of literacy in Georgia. They had a lot of maps that showed the various counties. And like, uh, Chief Man said, Houston County was the only one that was in the same color code as the ones around metro Atlanta when it came to quality of education. And further you got toward the center, to the center of Georgia with the smallest surrounding counties, it became less and less prevalent that folks weren't learning to read. The kids especially were, you know, fifth grade reading level. And some of the statistics that we learned were if you are not a third grade reading level by the time you're a certain age, you're almost completely against every statistic to get an education or continue or finish your education. Even in technical trade related, trade related fields. So, you know, that kind of had a lot of gravity to it and I instantly, um, started thinking about what we do here in Perry. And I'm glad that Major Grant's here tonight because she is our leisure program supervisor. The playground camp that she's been running for many, many years, they have a STEM component, they have a literacy component. They have education components that the kids get for the two months they're with us while they're not even in school. These are kids from ages five up to eleven. So as they were talking about things that you should need to be doing, they should need to look out for people like that, I'm already thinking, wow, they're already, they're doing this, they're already being a part of that. Um, so that kind of, you know, made me feel a little bit, uh, a little bit, you know, feel alright about it. Um, but, uh, we're going to continue to use leisure services as a platform for things more than sports. I mean, we love our, we, we love our sports, we're always, that's going to be part of the root of who we are forever. That's, that's where our industry started. But branching into things like cultural arts, education, programming, non-athletic recreational activities. Uh, and you have platforms for education all around you and you just go about it with the mentality to that mind. It's like our big Indian Creek Trail, the kiosks and things of that nature. You can incorporate these things to where it's part of what you're doing, you just have it on your radar. Uh, and I took that away from this course, also got some of your contact, our region for materials and the speakers to help us develop more of the, go down the road. Uh, the next, uh, last two classes, Recreation in Parks with Innovation and Best Practices. Uh, the notes that I made about that, you know, we're on the right track, I'll leave some bounds. This, the presenter for this course is the president of GRPA, a guy named Steve Carter, just came president this year. A very good director, nationally known for some of the things he's done. He was, uh, the director for Dalton, Georgia, I want to say, for fifteen, sixteen years, pretty good while. He's a very dynamic speaker, very educated, extremely knowledgeable and one of those guys that will give you his card and means that you probably want to. Um, everything that they were saying was just continuing to solidify, in my opinion, our goals for the next ten years that we're trying to achieve here in Perry. It's, it's, I, I'm, I take the impression that a lot of other communities may not have the radar down the way we're looking at it, some of the things that you're moving towards for quality of life issues. Uh, the last one was Recreation Program as Economic Development. Um, I know Robert and I have had plenty of conversations since I've been here about different things that are on the doorstep of Perry with both our departments working together. It's not a big secret anymore. Uh, this was something that you had to, if you talk about it fifteen years ago, sometimes it sounded like you're reaching, you know, give us money, instruct someone. But now the reality has set in that, you know, if I'm between age twenty-five and fifty-five and you've got certain amenities in your community, I'm definitely looking at you before I look at myself. No brainer. It is absolutely solidified all the data you look up. The things that you offer people to do when they're not working matters with where they choose to live. And it matters to the effect that businesses factor in that. You know, my employee base is going to be hacking when they're living and working where I built my plant or I put my business up. And it's finally coming around where now we don't have to, at least give them money. You know, you hear, are, we're pretty tough, but, uh, from this course, it, it just, it, it gave a lot of information that were fun to see the numbers. Uh, just because those of us who've been doing this for a while and known that for a long time, but to actually see it presented from someone of Robert's discipline, who was in finance, accounting, in the world of business. Putting out there the data that show the impact that quality leader services can affect your community. And from what we're doing here is saying that we're on the right track. We want to see something tomorrow, uh, from me about our, uh, about a revitalization of playgrounds that goes directly into those two courses. It is everything that we learn and talk about, Chief Man. So I could talk about it for a long time, it was a lot, it was a really good experience. Um, I really appreciated the opportunity, met a lot of great people, nice contacts, so thanks for letting us be part of it.
Mr. Woods?
Mayor and Council, this was my first opportunity to attend the GMA. I think it was a great experience, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I, uh, attended two classes, one was the same as, uh, one of the ones that Kevin went to, bi-friendly communities. Um, you know, maybe he was, um, monotone, but I thought it was, I, I think I got a little more out of it than, than maybe some of the others. Um, I was intrigued with the, uh, talk about bi-end tourism. Um, how you, some of the ways to, uh, create your infrastructure to encourage people in the bi-friendly community to, uh, kind of spend some time in your community. Have, having the facilities to attract them. And that, you know, they, they certainly have, um, tourism dollars to spend as well. So, I, you know, they, he commented on several, um, trails around the state, uh, the, the Silver Comet Trail. Um, he talked about, uh, Carrollton, uh, Carrollton Trail, which was really, uh, relating to the economy and to zoning in their community. Um, and as I understand it, I had a, uh, seen this, uh, in person, that, um, the Carrollton Trail seemed to be something that was more, um, in town, but also, um, ran out into the countryside. Um, and so certainly something that I thought was, was, you know, pertinent here to Perry. Looking at how you can take some of your existing, uh, road facilities and, uh, designate them as bike routes and assign them so that you have opportunities for people to, uh, to see what's, what's around Perry without necessarily being, having stayed in Perry. But certainly keeping them, like, coming and going. So I thought it was, uh, there were some interesting points that were brought up that certainly would be beneficial to, um, evaluate their, um, impact in looking at how they apply, how they might apply to Perry. The other, um, class that I went to was. The other um class that I went to was entitled Emerging Trends in Urban Design. I was, uh, on that, certainly looking at, um, I hope they find some opportunities uh that apply here in Perry. The class started out with really more of a history lesson on where urban design began. And really was the type of thing that I learned at college, had been working with for a number of years. Um, talking about the street grid system and how the grid system as opposed to uh suburban cul-de-sac designs um are much more walkable. Um, you can walk a further distance um in a grid system. Uh, maybe in a quarter mile or fifteen minute walk than you can try and get around a, a series of cul-de-sacs uh to try to get someplace. Um, also the opportunity, you know, if one road gets blocked, you have other, other routes um to get around that. So certainly um in looking at our, as we look at our um subdivision standards, looking at how we may be able to incorporate more or incentivize more grid system designs as opposed to cul-de-sac designs, or at least some modified grid system. So I think that was certainly um a good aspect and match reminders. Again, I was looking for something that was more on topic, on, on, more current. Um, and this appeared to be more of the history background. So I, that was more of that. But I think some of, just again, reminders of, of uh some of the characteristics and foundations that urban design is important to, to redevelop. And thanks for the opportunity to, to attend.
Thank you. Ms. Kane?
Listen, um, Mayor and Council, I too would like to thank you for the opportunity to attend uh the January convention. Uh, during that time I attended seven classes. Uh, the first one was a revenue, municipal revenue class, which is a reemphasis on some of the class, a class that I just attended that I could make, which is talk about all the revenues uh the city could uh collect on. As well as um some major focuses on the hotel motel tax and the changes that occurred last year and the filing of the reports which we are, um, were really with. Um, where they changed it from it could be filed online and not in, um, public. Um, the property tax one-on-one, if any of you have also attended that one. It was just basic uh information about the um property taxes as well as the total at-broaring tax. Fairly limited information on that one. One of the changes uh that said that would be coming about with the property taxes when publishing um the military rating when we send the military rating was at one, one point had to present that added a take or two weeks prior to. But now it's just one week. Uh, that was changed. Um, I attended the risk and insurance where we went over um with the local government liability and insurance issues. Uh, we talked about the federal and state claims, uh, when claims are filed, when they could when the liability shifts from the employer to the employee, which I thought that was uh quite interesting. Um, do need to take a little bit more time and read on that one. Um, it's a lot of information. Uh, we talked about safety as far as insurance is concerned. Um, make sure that we communicate to our employees, which I think we do here. Where our safety committee uh does work and everyone, every department has a representative on that committee. And I think we all communicated that information on to our employees. Also spoke about the work accomplished. We are, we are uh up to speed on that as well. Um, the, and the, this is not in order of attendance, but it was the new, new and emerging technology for um for citizens, um, for cities, sorry. And five aspects of um information, uh, technology that we need to consider, which I think we are doing here, which is one GIS, which is Brian, this partner is working on, I think, very well and they have been for a while. Um, one single point of contact to think that we on our website or something, we just have one single point of contact for information for our cities where they can just go to and find and not have to go all over the place. Um, sensitive to browser-based systems. Um, business intelligence, where's the information about our city is right there, pertinent information. Um, if this, what our budget is and how much hotel motel tax and things like that. Other businesses um or citizens could click on and be able to find that information. I think that was sort of followed from that meeting that we, just in one, we had a vendor where we're saying that all that stuff could be right there on the page. So I was going back to that. Yeah, but the cost involved with that guy.
Be careful.
Right, the, the cost. Um, and communication and mobility is, and it should be a few kinds of receiving from under there in the best ways. Um, we are mobile, uh, and things like that. But I, I too thought it was a great conversation again um with all the others, um, particularly with the board of the NAWA, but um everyone was saying that when we, we went to these and then we, we looked and it was like, hey, we, we're up to speed, we're doing what we're, um, we're, we're not lacking, we're not behind. And that is because of your leadership and we do appreciate that. That you know, are giving us opportunity to uh advance and when we came in, it was kind of helped. But at the end, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Chief Parker, I know you've got a big report for us. But I think I'm going to postpone it until the next time. If you don't look ill, if you don't look well. Chief Wheeler on this thing, this is what we'll go from there.
Mr. Gilmore, is there going to be any others that we need to hear from?
Yes, sir.
Council, would y'all like to chime in or from that standpoint? Or not?
It was a good event. Um, like Mr. Dice suggested, I, I learned quite a bit talking to people on the bus ride or boat ride to and from events that, that I, that I do sometimes in the classes themselves. And some of it is absolutely shocking of what either is doing, or people are doing or not doing and should its own. And again, as been said before, City Perry is doing it, is doing it right. I'm hoping that we can stay close to that cutting edge. I don't know that we'll ever have enough money if you will, to compete there. But I think we're doing so many things right that we are, we are used as examples uh more so than not across the state and, and that is one of the best compliments that we can have. And it's thanks to y'all and, and this, this council and Mr. Gilmore. And what we're trying to do again is position this city uh that we're able to continue to be viable, that it will continue to be a destination. And it's just as important, it'll be, it'll continue to draw people. And that, that's, I think, the ultimate measure of success that any community can have and where I think we're fortunate. We, we take great pains to, to make sure that we stay on those tracks um continuously. But thank y'all for your, for your reports. I'm glad to y'all have got something out of it from that standpoint.
Anything further on that? Item three D four, just discuss possible names for the Third Street and JC's site projects. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, uh, I think one thing that will help us, kind of like in the communication and everything, is you have approved Phase One for the Third Street Site and the JC Site, which are the park program. And it helps get people oriented and ahead, I think it'd be a good idea for you to consider some possible name for them, although you don't need to do that obviously right now. So I contacted the Perry Area Historical Society and asked if they had any suggestions. And you can see some of the suggested uh names that they provided there. Um, so certainly don't need anything right now. You may want to wait till the park stuff and everything is done, but I think the sooner you get a name out there so people can relate to it and know what's going on and where you're referring to it, uh, you know, would be better. Um, so if you had any, any type of thoughts on that. Uh, I know, at least from my perspective, uh, is on the Third Street Park, if you don't mind here. On the Third Street Park, when they talk about Penn and Dixie, I think that's quite appropriate if you're familiar with that immediate neighborhood there. Because probably homes in there and everything were all constructed for the manager and the people who work out were C-Mexes now. You know, came back there and that was one of the first development type of things that, that happened in Perry uh or around Perry and everything. So for example, that might be a good historic timing type of thing. Um, you see there are a number of names that are listed there, all fine people, you know, don't get me wrong on that. But a lot of times it's a little better to stay away from, you know, names and all that type of stuff that's one person likes it, the other person doesn't. Um, and, and, and the other thing too is, is that a lot of times, uh, particularly with all the new residents we have come in, you can have the person's name in there, but it won't, it won't relay or mean anything to them. They don't know the person, they don't know just like what happened or any of that type of stuff. Um, on the JC Site and everything, there are some, you know, good names there and everything. Uh, maybe at least my feeling is, is that they have, you can see there the Legacy Walk. And that comes, I think, a little closer to what you all had talked about, the American Phase One is Reflecting Pool. And, and one side of it is for those folks who were veterans, which is nice and a lot of folks do that. But one of the excellent ideas that you all had there is on the other side of reflecting upon our significant citizens. You know, who have contributed something to Perry, but not necessarily that they were in the, I mean, they might have been or they weren't like a veteran or any of that type of stuff. So just some food for thought for y'all, start, you know, thinking about what you would like to do. And certainly if any general public or y'all have any other suggestions or whatever. But I would recommend to you that we start to move and get some type of consensus about getting names so people can really start to identify them. You know, as much as for a number of folks, even I can relate to, unless, you know, we're talking about putting this park and you know where this Peggy's used to be, you know, that, that's kind of starting to drop off pretty soon. A number of folks aren't going to be able to make, relate to that and talk about, well, the JC Park, we're going to be tearing down the JC building. You know, so you see what I mean? So I think we could get, you know, its own particular name and set identity up so people can read it too.
Any thoughts, Council?
Ms. Palmer, do we have the ability to ask a question online and have people respond to? I'm just going to throw this out there and it's, it's dangerous to think out loud, but I'm going to do it. Um, would, would Council be, are having objections to her putting in the appropriate place online on, on our website, uh, the ability for, for the citizens to make suggestions on what the names of these parks may or may not be? As long as they keep it nice from that standpoint. And the only reason I ask um that is to, is just one more opportunity for the public to have input on something. From that standpoint. Any thoughts, Council? The signs quit thinking.
I would like to see it narrowed down a little.
Okay.
Um, if it's possible to, to narrow them both down some more. Because, and like what you said, I would, um, one more time. That I would like for us to stay away from the names of people. And uh because, and if we could narrow it down to the ones that are not people.
But knowing that, you, you might be able to, you might be able to several other names that you want to put on this. You might leave it open, but have ten names and say, tell us which one you think is the best.
But I think you also, a lot of folks not doing, know what the plans for those parks are. And there's some significance that the name may need to be tied to that, especially when we build memorials and so forth. And so understanding the concept of the park, they influence what the name is.
Yeah, and that's why I say the Legacy Walk or Legacy Park. It's outlined like Mr. Gilmore said, so, you know, I think you would probably get a bigger variety that, you know, Uncle Joe, you know, there have been more wanted. What a name that can.
I think they just put a list of, come up with a list if we're going to do that.
I have a question uh about JC Site. Okay, now. For me, I like Veterans Memorial Park, but on the side where we're going to do all our other citizens, I kind of like um Legacy Walk. I mean, is it possible to name a park and just, you know, as a suggestion, uh, Veterans Memorial and then on that side just put something so people will know that there's a separation?
Well, I think the legacy would include the veterans. If you call it Veteran Park, it gives people a perception it's only for veterans. And I think the legacy idea is much better because all those people are leaving a legacy, whether they're military or civilians or whatever and so.
Well, just long as, I think what we're going to have to do is we have to put an explanation with each one of the things that you put online.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Can I ask a question? So do y'all want me to do it like a survey, where I can do like multiple choice? Is that what y'all want me to do? I mean, I can do that, just like a two-question survey?
Once we give you the answer.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
I, I think I like the longer line, which as I understand the discussion, there'll be on there a brief description that tells what the concept and purpose of the park is. And then underneath that would be a series of suggested or possible names. You'll follow along the lines like what you're, and then you have a deal about other. And then assistant can put in whatever they would like on that one. Kind of like, does that sound right?
You don't like any of them?
I don't like any of them.
My name is going to be.
Probably is going to get some of that, you know. You know, and then, then you get that feedback back to you, you know, but uh, you know, I think it's, it's an excellent idea to follow along the lines like the mayor said about the deal about the outreach and provide people the opportunity. I also think, you know, like was talked about, it helps an awful lot to at least have some suggestions there to get people kind of thinking and all that type of stuff. And then you have the answer one blank, well, they put in if they like something. That sound correct?
Sounds good. Okay, move forward, Council. Very good. That take care of you? Thank you. Item three D five, installation of sidewalk from Kenwood Drive to Main Street. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my office was approached by some of the citizens in Camelot Subdivision talking about how they would like to, we have a sidewalk installed from Kenwood Drive down to Main Street. Uh, just bringing this to you, one, because we had a citizen request and we will consider putting that in the list with a number of other sidewalks. Won't have any higher, I'm talking about angst up in the capital proven program. So unless you all have some objections, we will, we will take a look at that. Uh, a couple of the issues that went that is number one, uh, where would we actually like it to go? For example, do we want to have it go to the hospital? You know, Morning Side there, because that's basically where you're talking about making the connect, everybody with me, about coming down on Morning Side. The other thing we'll have to go back and check and see on is how far, and I apologize, I don't, I know there's some there. I'm not sure sidewalks on Main Street go all the way to Morning Side.
They do.
You see what I mean? So we just.
They start off, start off.
Yeah, go in and have those, have those connections there. But if you all uh concur, then we'll just add this on the list. Not prioritized, but on the list for sidewalks to go back and, we, I could get back with the citizens.
And doesn't, isn't there a sidewalk in front of the hospital that passes into the sidewalk? I think it ends at the hospital. But then it's not through the curtain.
Not given. You know, unfortunately, this won't be easy, just like you talked about when you're coming down from Prince Chapel, it's on the school side of the sidewalk. And then you get to the hospital and then if you're to continue on, on that side, well, Camelot's on the other side of Morning Side and then you run into some kind of hole. But anyway, we'll, we'll get back, get something to move and proceed with. As long as you all concur, like, yes, that's okay to add to the sidewalk improvement list.
Are we all?
Yeah, thank you. You don't have to maneuver looking at where you would put it. If you put it on the side of the park, I think you're. You don't have to maneuver, looking at where you would put it, uh, if you put it on the side of the park, I think you've got a lot of, fully in, in, right in, exactly, it's a lot of pockets, basically.
Still, was anything else needs to come under item three or item for review and discussion?
Yes, sir.
Our four council members, Mr. Tyler Grace, Mr. Walker, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Kane?
I've come a bit, Steve, and I, I have been going by, uh, people with the park, and, um, Mr. Dye, you might want to be a part of it. I noticed that, the provision that we don't finish, a lot of people parking the cars on, on their pad, you know, I, I, I was going to say something, you know, something, I don't need to get involved with that, you know, me and Mr. Tyler Grace suggested that maybe we put a sign that no parking on the pad. I've been by there several times, people just pull up on the, like, it's a garage, but they don't depart the cars out there. Yeah, because I just, I think we need to address that, you know what I mean? So we don't want nobody to start, well, the cars start, or maybe trucks on them, well, I don't know how to see it, if we're going, but if we're going to break it, we just, I think, you know what I mean? I think that's something we need to make a note of, you know, because I've been over there several times, I notice people parking the cars on them, you know, like, come and tell them it's not, to park the car on, you know what I mean?
What time of day you noticing this?
Well, it's in the afternoon, in the evening, you know, so, I've been noticing that in the evening time.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, just one quick follow-up, uh, Mr. Caesar Gorman came to see me, I think most of you know Mr. Gorman, he runs the Kimberley, it's Kimberley Jamaican booth now. Anyway, he came in and he was talking about that it would be good if the city had some type of program for small businesses to give them some relief on the sewer charge. And so I explained to him about how the process works, and sewer costs twice as much as water and treatment and so on and so forth. Gorman still felt that that was something that small businesses could, you know, should be able to have some type of break. I asked Mr. Gorman where he anticipated funding would come from that, uh, and he said, well, maybe we can get some grants. And I said, I'm not going to with any grants that provide any type of funding for that. So anyway, uh, just mentioned this to you because he wanted to make sure that was passed on to you, so I have done that. Uh, unless you have some objections, we'll run a quick check to see if there are some type of small business grant or something like that to get back with Mr. Gorman to respond back to them. I would definitely not suggest we do anything to change our structure that we have relative to our water and sewer rigs and all that type of stuff. Because we, we're, we're very good with it now, but there was quite a struggle for us. My was race to testify, I've been on the council for such a long time, and Mr. Kane to get to where we are, so we don't want to do anything that changes things. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Hope? Thank you. Item five, reporting here on, Mr. Dye? Thank you. Mr. Kane?
Just like to, um, let you know that we are continuing to move the board with the August tax, so it's the first Tuesday in August. And as of Friday, there were like ninety-five parks that were still open, that were still moving forward, I'm not sure if it was one or down, um, on people.
Thank you. Chief Wheeler, anything for us to not go to?
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, a couple of related items, just to, um, I know that you've got, uh, copy of the information regarding single-family permits in your email from Chris, but just wanted to point out, um, in looking at that in relation to, um, past years. So for the first six months of this year, we've already issued a hundred and fifty-nine single-family permits for new single-family residences. That is our second-best year so far for that first six months. Two thousand and seven was a hundred and fifty-four, so five above that. Two thousand and six was a hundred and seventy-two, so we're getting close. And then we are well above last year's a hundred and thirty-five. Also, just pointing out that we're, we're inching up on Warner Robins, uh, they were at one seventy-one in that type of grade this year. So, uh, that's continuing.
One of the things that really interests me in that is the bag of those houses is going up significantly. We were pretty much behind Cinderhill and, well, we're definitely behind County, but Warner Robins, but I see now on average, cost generated by a house is much higher in Perry than it is in Warner Robins. So that means we're building higher-priced houses and bringing to larger revenues.
Right, I'll, and I'll look at, I don't think we actually.
I just, I just tracked that personally because it's just something I'm in, because it was apparent that we were such, you know, uh, the houses we were building were of less value, much less value than the other missous houses, and that's changed, and so, I'm aware of see that.
The other thing is, uh, a little bit related that I'd like to just point out that we started, kind of goes back to something that I mentioned in our budget discussions that we'll be looking at, uh, potential need for, um, additional building inspector. So we've, we've, I've asked inspectors to start keeping a log of how many inspections they do per day, what type of inspection is, some of them taking more time than others, um, and I believe I've mentioned to you that typically, fifth, an average of fifteen per day is getting up to max, uh, the maximum that we can do efficiently. This first month, uh, for June, um, we did two hundred and seventy-four, uh, total inspections. Those were over twenty-two business days, for an average of just under twelve and a half per day. We did have seven days out of those twenty-two that were, where they had more than fifteen for that day. So right now, or the, the month, June, is thirty-three percent of our workdays, we had, uh, more than, more than fifteen. So we'll be keeping some records so we can, uh, show you, um, if that becomes a need.
Mr. Wood, also, I have a concern and, and a criticism that I have received from builders that we don't respond in a timely manner. I have not had that in some time. I want to make certain that, that as you do your analysis, that our response, uh, time between the request for a, an inspection, and the actual inspection remains at a reasonable level.
We are, uh, our, our, right now, our standard is if you call in the, in the afternoon or the evening, you'll get that inspection, uh, probably in the morning. We'll give a certain time, and then we'll be out sometime in the morning. If you call in the morning, we get the inspection to happen.
That's very reasonable.
Certainly, there may be an occasion when that does occur for one reason, but that's our typical time.
That's good, that's good, thank you, sir. Mr. Shell, you have? Mr. Smith?
Uh, nothing further, sir. Who am I not calling now, since I've confused myself, Chief Lamb? I need to start writing this down, if I can, I'm good, Mayor, I'm ready, thank you, thank you.
All right, you guys want to say anything? You what? Oh, no, Ms. Ms. Palmer, anything?
I don't have anything left.
Thank you. Ms. Edson?
Nothing more, thank you.
I always got something, but not tonight. I have, uh, our next meeting is tomorrow evening, five o'clock is the pre-council meeting, six o'clock is council. The, uh, agendas you should hardly have, if you all, and have anything that you need to, to, make sure we get on there, please let me know. That is all I have for now. If there's nothing further, of course, I appreciate your participation, we stand adjourned.